We do one of those.
In a non.
No, that's not how you gotta turn that. That's a sad in a non.
Yes, right.
Sadness in the world. I'm like, now I can be like, you're gonna keep saying, oh, I like him because I like him. Yeah. So they're shushing, get to try it.
I hope.
You don't have much. Yeah. Put it away. They're not on my desk. Oh, we're not even gonna spend that. Isn't that a green jacket?
Yes.
He's like at the front. But the non sign language.
Yeah. You got three minutes.
You want me to go with my whole thing?
You got two minutes.
Yeah, we have two. Well, now it's one minute. We'll wait.
That's not according to that.
Whatever the stuff. I'll move out of cell phone tower.
My computer and my watch is five fifteen nine.
Is it warm enough in here?
It's decently out of my, I brought in the, I'm just focused, I'm thinking what's gonna be cold, but I'm always the one.
We turned it up. I turned it, I had them turn it five degrees like thirty hours ago.
Very comfortable right now.
I don't know if we caught up or not. Since we have students today, they're also pretty physical.
They wanna be free.
Extra carbon dioxide.
Nah, they're, they're cross country runners, they have to run outside. Perfect, thank you.
That's a bad race.
Just wait. So on the.
It's very.
It was cozy.
It's only because I was walking around. See, for a second, you know, like, turn that, then I'm.
Okay. Get into it. At this time, I would like to talk the order, the September twenty fourth, twenty twenty four meeting at the Hartford J- ones, the school district board of education. Give a roll call please.
Ms. Crank.
Here.
Lender.
Here.
Crank.
Here.
Here. Here. This is a meeting of the board of education in public for the purpose of conducting the district business, and it is not to be considered a public community meeting. There is a time for public participation during the meeting as indicated in the agenda. Any district resident or parents of a currently enrolled student wishing to speak should have filled out a card located on the sign in table and given to the board secretary. Are there any comments tonight? Okay. And now we're gonna move on to the pledge of allegiance, and we have some special guests to help lead us in that tonight. So could you guys all come forward? Over here.
Thank you nicely.
I'd like to thank you all for your support of the States of America and to the republic for which you stand. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and.
Thank you, guys, now you get to come up here and shake off.
I shake all our hands.
Thank you so much. Thank you. So this is our central middle school, um, some student council representatives from the, the, the middle school, so thank you to all of them and the parents for allowing them to come. We really appreciate it. The next item here is to consider the approval of the agenda. The agenda notes the board's mission. We will support our community through dedicated governance, leadership, and stewardship so that our students achieve. It also states our values and expectations as a board in governing our meetings. The purpose of the agenda is, the agenda approval is twofold. The first reason is to verify that public notice has been given according to state statute nineteen point eight four. Mrs. Hoffman, has the meeting been properly noticed?
Yes.
Thank you. The second reason for the approval of the agenda is to consider tabling an item or to rearrange the order of events. I don't believe there's been any discussion of that. So could I have a motion?
I move to approve the agenda.
A second.
All in favor?
I am.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. And now we're on to our presentation of student excellence, which at this meeting is from Central Middle School. So I will turn it over to you.
Yes, I am so excited to introduce Mr. Eric Green and Ms. Ally Morrow, our two cross country coaches. Official this year as we bring sports back to the school district, so Dr. Rogatka, um, Ms. Morrow and Mr. Green, if you could come up to the front and then we'd ask that you introduce your student athletes. And, uh, begin your presentation.
All right, well, thank you so much for having us here. Um, this is something that, um, all of us are extremely, extremely excited for. And, uh, just oozing with gratitude. Um, right here to my left is, uh, seventh grader Aiden McLean. Next to him, Alano, our eighth grader. Mason, another eighth grader. Myra, eighth grader. Alyssa, seventh grader. Louis, eighth grader. And Jasmine, seventh grader. And behind me is Coach Morrow, who we are extremely, extremely, extremely lucky to have. She is amazing and, um, well, I don't know about. Yeah, so that is, uh, this is the representatives that we chose to come here because these kids have, um, just shined with their effort, their attendance, and, um, their behavior, so. We have a lot of other, well, we have nineteen kids total on the team, so the other kids that are not here are also doing an incredible job too. But we kinda consider this group right here the leaders and, uh, I'm just so, so proud of all of them. So, thank you very much.
Yeah.
Uh, I'll echo what Coach Green says, well, the hard work that they've shown the first couple of weeks or about halfway through our season right now has been tremendous. And just to see like their confidence grow from the first meet where you all were a little nervous, yes? Okay, we can go up to that, um, to now they're getting excited for meets, they look forward to it. They look forward to practice. Yes. Uh, and just to see like their confidence grow and to bond as a team, I think some of them knew each other going into the season, but a lot didn't, and now they're kind of finding all the commonality. And just from myself working in the school, I get to see them the day of the meets, wear their shirts and get all excited and see other staff support them, which has been really great. I'm gonna let them kind of share a little bit about themselves too, if whoever wants to. Not gonna crush you, uh, but Aiden's next to me, so I'm gonna turn to you and say, is this your?
I've done, this is my first year of cross country.
This is my first year of cross country too.
Also my first year of cross country.
It's my first year too.
This is my third year of cross country.
Uh, this is my first year in cross country and sports in general.
This is my second year in cross country.
I mean, one of the really coolest things about all this is out of the nineteen kids, I think eleven of them, this is their first chance, they had a chance to play, um, any sport, so any athletic opportunity. Um, our first day of practice was, I think, September third, the first day of school, and we had twelve kids the first day, and I'm not gonna lie, cross country is not fun the whole time. I mean, it's run. High, go run, basically, you know, there's more to it than that, but the next day I was like, man, I hope eight show up, hope most of the kids come back. We ended up with fourteen. And then the next day fifteen, and you know, every day we've, or every couple of days we've added a kid, so right now we're possibly at about twenty kids. And like we said, our season is more than halfway over. Um, the effort has just been incredible. And again, like, everybody in this room should be so proud of them because they are just doing a tremendous job. So I just wanted to reiterate that point, and I am the lucky one because I get to hang out with this awesome group and learn from them myself, so. It is a pleasure to be with them Monday through Thursday for the time that I have, I love it. So thank you for this opportunity. I am very thankful for it.
We have seven, we, we have, we have seven meets total, we have four left, so after this week, we have two next week, and two the week after. Leading up to like our conference championship meet, which kind of culminates the whole season, uh, which we're really excited for to see those results continue. A lot of these kids have already made tremendous growths from their first meet to the most recent one, which is great for them to see, and we really emphasize like, it's like life. The more you put into it, the more hard work you put in, it's like school, it's like life, they're gonna see the results too. So I know before every meet, we ask them their goals, and then we ask them afterwards, did they achieve their goals? And a lot of them answer is yes, which has been great.
Do you guys have a home meet at all or no?
We have some nearby, but not like on Central's campus.
Okay.
No, we have, um, Slinger.
Yeah, we have, or.
There's Slinger.
Speed is at Heritage Park, um, next Tuesday. And maybe, you know, going forward, there will be some type of home event in partnership with maybe somebody at the high school. Um, it's just, there was a lot to do at once, it was hard to just do anything. I, I mean, everything that we've done so far has been fantastic, to take on a whole meet as well, it's a whole other animal.
Yeah.
You know, next year, that would be awesome, that'd be really, not in the cards this year. The high school didn't host a meet this year, so that would have been a natural opportunity to potentially use the course they already had set up, but they didn't host a meet themselves, so. Again, between that and the timing, things just.
Yeah. So I have a question for the kids, um, obviously, hopefully in the spring we'll have track. So who's thinking about signing up for track too?
Just raise your hands.
Same thing, running or is it just gonna be running for track?
Track will have running and field events, so.
Okay.
Running will expand from sprinting like a hundred meters up to, they go up to two miles, sixteen hundred.
Okay.
And they can do field events, so quite a few of you guys have done field events, Alyssa will do throwing, long jump. So there's an event for everyone in track.
That's the beauty of these two sports, like, the, the thing we try to tell the kids, like you mentioned with money, you know, also like every day it's like, don't worry so much about competing against Slinger over here and German Tunnel over here, like. Compete against who you were yesterday, just do the best you can, improve your time, improve your effort, stay accountable, be a great teammate, and it's the same with track, you know, so. And again, there's an event for everybody, so they're just two wonderful sports, even at the high school level, they don't cut. Both programs at the Hartford High School are incredible, with all the coaches, girls and boys.
They do an amazing job, and they are extremely interested in this at Central right now because we have had our fourteenth day today. I believe, and Coach Paul, the head coach for the high school boys, has shown up seven times to check up on us, and he's very positive with those checkups. And would anybody, would any of the kids like to say what happened with the girls program when they came, does anybody wanna talk about that? No, that's okay, I, I was trying to give somebody an opportunity, go ahead.
We were able to run with them for a bit and, uh, get to know them.
So like the whole high school girls team showed up at practice and they ran the entire practice and it was amazing. So support at the high school level is like, at every high school right now, like they're very interested, it's awesome. So.
Question. Uh, how do you score a cross country meet?
So cross country meets are scored by your top five runners in each race, so the lowest score wins, kinda like golf, and then kinda goes from there. So your top five are your scorers, if you have more than five in your race, they're kind of called like your, uh, your pushers, because the higher they score, the less someone else scores. So it can be your tiebreaker and it pushes other people's scores higher.
So the lowest score wins, the highest you can have is fifteen, so one plus two plus three plus four is five, is fifteen.
What, from the kids, what has been your favorite part about having a sport at the middle school and being able to participate in it?
It being just right there and I can just go right after school, not having to, uh, go home and then. Uh, drive somewhere.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, I think mine's kind of the same answer, I really like that I go somewhere after school and it's really fun to be there, so. Uh, I've played other sports before, but none were as, uh, exciting as this one, so happy that this opportunity opened up and I could participate.
I like that it's at the school because it gives you a chance to run with people that you're like with all day, but it's not learning, it's kind of more exciting, cuz it's like, you're always like striving to get a better goal, like, against yourself, while also having fun with people you learn with too.
Uh, just having like a non academic thing that you can do while also improving yourself over the period of time.
I like that, um, that some of my friends are in it and improving with them is just fun.
And other questions?
Where do you guys run when they're practicing at the school?
Where do we run?
Yes.
We typically run in the very on Central's property, so it's really nice to have that so close that we don't have to leave the campus for school and just allows for so many different workouts and for us to do, which is nice, helps keep. The kids safe because we know where they are, we can see them pretty much all the time, and it allows them to practice on a course that's similar to most of the things that they'll race on.
Yeah, that is a excellent resource to have right next to the middle school, I hope that's gonna be there forever, because it is perfect.
Anybody else have any? Does anybody else have any other questions or anything? Okay, again, just thank you so much, and these kids are doing an amazing job, and we are all very, 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 very thankful for this, so, thank you.
Me first. Good job. Thanks for the contribution.
Thanks so much. So glad that you're doing that, it's our first.
Uh, it was like a club with, you know, it was a club.
Oh, the way to girls.
Yeah.
It was. Great job, thank you, make sure you do one of them, guys. Thank you. I gotta go back over.
So leave your, um, certificates, just hold on. Yep. Awesome. All right. One more.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Thanks. Yes.
Okay, number five is the citizens' delegation to be heard, and we have none, so we're skipping to number six, which is the board president's report. And tonight I am honored to welcome three, um, uh, three people from our community who are part of our. W A S B business honor roll. So the W A S B business honor recognizes outstanding local businesses that support their schools. This year fifty-nine school districts across the state nominated one hundred and eighty-five businesses that provided a wide range of services and support for their local schools and students. So we want to congratulate three of them, tonight we're wel, we're welcoming Chloe from Scooters Coffee, Ray and Carrie from Scoop Deville. And Mark and Jeremy from Eastside Lumber, so I'm gonna read a little thing about Scoop Deville, I'm sorry, about Scooters first. And then we'll have them up here to do a certificate, and then at the end we're gonna do one picture with everyone. And we also have Barb from the chamber, Barb is new to the chamber, and so she's here to help us recognize and honor each of these important community partners as well. Thank you, Barb, for coming tonight. Um, Scooters Coffee, Scooters brought a much needed boost of cheer to our district during February and beyond. By providing coffee, hot water, and mini donuts to each building, they ensured that our entire team felt appreciated and energized. They also provided every team member buy with buy one get one coupons, which further extended their support for later use and treats. Uh, additionally, the store leader Sarah McLaughlin went above and beyond by joining our administrative team to personally serve staff, creating a sense of community and gratitude. Scooters Coffee's thoughtful contributions made a meaningful impact, brightening the spirits of our team members, so thank you to Scooters. Yeah.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you so much. And we're gonna get one picture, are we gonna do it right now? Yes. Okay. We're gonna take your picture out of the way. Scoop Deville Ice Cream Shop. Scoop Deville Ice Cream Shop played a key role in connecting our district families with new administrators during an important picture day in August of twenty twenty-three. By providing delicious ice cream, they created a welcoming atmosphere that drew families in, making introductions easy and enjoyable for our district administrator, director of curriculum, and middle school assistant principal. They served the ice cream that night. Beyond this event, owners Ray and Carrie extended their generosity by supplying a portable freezer, paper products, and serving supplies for a staff gathering in April. Their support truly brought cheers to our entire district family, fostering community and connection. And on a personal note, I'll just announce that Ray and Carrie are just new, newly retired, and so we're, we're welcoming you back, but thanking you for all of the service you provided, so Ray and Carrie.
It's very intense with you. I was, I was gonna establish the other days, oh, we, to make sure that you're fine.
That's what we heard. We'll have you guys from front and center for a photo, I mean, I didn't. You guys commemorate it. And our last business honor roll, uh, is Eastside Lumber. Eastside Lumber made a lasting impact on our district by partnering with the school, the Vision House team, and additional contributors to create an outdoor classroom entitled The Wildcat Outdoor Classroom. In memory of a beloved administrator who passed away in twenty twenty-three. This space dedicated to her passion for science and the outdoors is a beautiful tribute that will allow her legacy to live on in the hearts of students, staff, and the community who utilize our outdoor space. This collaboration not only provided a meaningful way to honor her memory, but will also enrich our educational environment with a unique space that reflects her love for learning and for nature. So Eastside Lumber, thank you so much. I'm excited to see the. Okay, one more, guys. Just beginning to get your stuffs done, I'm taking them back, you guys.
Then yell also.
Yeah, just to, for all of you, you are welcome to leave at this time, we have some business to attend to, you're welcome to stay and listen to it, but if you don't want to, there's no offense taken. You're so tired, you gotta know where to go.
We don't have a question, it's all readers.
We don't serve any sweet treats here though, Dan, I just wanted to be clear, I wish we did, but it's not currently on the agenda. Um, I'll just wrap up my report by just saying it's just wonderful to see these wonderful community supporters who help us out, help our students out, our staff, so it's an honor to have you all here tonight. Um, and I just wanna comment to say, I've been on the board since we were talking about sports at the middle school, so to have our first sports team here tonight with their coaches was really kind of a thrill for me. And, um, to hear from all the students themselves about what they appreciate about it is, is amazing, so kudos to board members for, and administrators and everyone, I know Jordan did a lot of work. So thank you to everyone who made, made this a go and made an effort of it, it's great to see. With that, I'm going to turn over to Dr. Vialobos for the district administrator's report.
Thank you very much, President, well. The very first thing that I want to share is not actually a report from me, I'm going to call up our assistant principal, Mr. Jordan Stevens, our summer school principal and assistant principal, Mr. Joe Navarre. And then also Dr. Lori Rogatka, all three of them played a role in this year's summer academy. Typically, summer academy falls for a middle school assistant principal, however, with Mr. Stevens' leave this year, Dr. Rogatka did a lot on the front end, and Mr. Navarre stepped up and, um, completed the role of summer school principal. And so if I could call them up to help share the, uh, the academy report.
Here we go. New to this. All right, so summer school was great this year, um, if you look at the board report that we gave you, um, you can see that our FTEs were up, our instructional minutes were up. Uh, that's very exciting that we're seeing more students signing up for summer academy, uh, so that was wonderful. Um, Dr. Rogatka, uh, did a wonderful job trying to get in, um, teachers at the last minute when some things were, um. You know, things were in motion, and she did a wonderful job of trying to get orchestra and band back in, in the summer academy, which was wonderful. And then we had a couple of new classes this year that were really big hits. First one was Live It Up in the Library, run by Mrs. Hanlon, and that had students from all ages in the library doing different activities, uh, reading together, older kids sometimes reading with younger kids, um, doing, um. You know, brainstem activities that would have them expanding their puzzle bu, building skills and all that stuff, so there were a lot of cool stuff going on in that Live It Up in the Library class. And I got a feeling that will. And I got a feeling that will be a more popular class as we go on. Another new class was Summer Newspaper. It did not have a lot of kids this year, because I really don't think they knew what they were signing up for. I think they had like six kids. But by the end of it, you could see all the other kids in the building just being excited by it, because they actually did create their own little mini newspaper. They interviewed some new staff members. They talked about the outdoor classroom that was being built. Thank you to Eastside Lumber, but I think they're gone. But so, it was a really cool paper that they were able to give out. So, they gave it to the teachers. They gave it to Dr. Ragatska. They gave it to myself. By the end of it, Dr. Ragatska had decided to make it a club at Central for during the school year. I'm not sure how that's going, but I'm sure I'll let you talk about it.
Yes, I'd love to talk about that. No, all of those same kids came back and are on the Newspaper Club. They had their first meeting last week, and they are super excited. I'm not going to share anything else, because you'll have to wait till you get your copy, but super excited. Mrs. Bourbonay is their advisor, and she is also super excited about it. So, it was a great summer school class with just a few kids, and it's gonna turn into something pretty amazing, hopefully.
That is awesome. The kids loved it, so I'm really glad that they were able to bring that in. Summer School wasn't new this year with being six weeks long. So, instead of four weeks with a two-week jumpstart, it was a six-week-long summer school, which was excellent. I think staff was amazing, because it's a little bit longer than they were used to. But we had great attendance from staff, great attendance from students. And, you know, as I'm walking around the building, I see a lot of smiles. I see a lot of kids and really enjoying what they're doing. So, the six-week Summer School was wonderful. And then, we did have a two-day Middle School Connections for incoming sixth graders. And I'll let Mr. Stevens talk on that, because he was ready and jumping back into that summer school principal role, which he will jump back into next summer.
Thanks, Mr. Navarre. Middle School Connections is a two-day, half-day event, 8:00 AM to noon, getting the incoming sixth graders acclimated to the middle school. Ms. Morrow, our counselor, who was here earlier with cross-country, helps figure out that, as well as Mrs. Beck, one of our eighth-grade teachers. They've done it for a number of years. Really just getting students comfortable in the building, getting used to their schedules, going over day-to-day logistics. I don't have the numbers right in front of me. I know we're over 50 students. And hopefully, continue to grow that, hopefully get as many incoming sixth graders as possible. So, appreciate Mr. Navarre taking the reins for the six-week Summer School course. And I know Dr. Ragatska has done a really nice job building up the Summer Academy program. And I can attest, my son Dominic, who attends Lincoln, he did the Pathway to Kindergarten program. And it was a really nice six-week program to get him kind of acclimated and ready to start his transition into kindergarten. So.
Any questions from you guys?
One question. I hope this is something you can tell about the Newspaper Club. I'm just curious how often they'll be in addition.
We're thinking about once a month, but I think we're gonna get get things figured out, how they're gonna do that all. But I know they've already got their first edition planned, and people have got their assignments. And but again, I'm not giving away any secrets.
Very fun. Okay, I'm excited.
I'll just make a comment, because obviously, I had a sixth grader, and she was super excited for Jump Start. And I will say that the kids that didn't go to Jump Start after the first day wanted to jump in to Jump Start, because they were hearing from their friends that were there. So, yes, I think we need to do a better job. I don't know what that is. But I think when they realize that it's super fun, and you get to meet everyone from both buildings, because that's the biggest thing of why I encouraged Addison to go, was you're gonna meet friends from Rossman or people you don't know at all, and it's just great to have that experience and see there's so many more of you than what you thought. So, that was really awesome, and I just truly appreciate, want to say thank you for getting orchestra up and running, because that Jump Start for summer, to just have them play an instrument and just fuck around, is amazing. So, I really appreciate that.
We do have some plans for doing some different advertising for Middle School Connections. So, that'll hopefully get more kids in, which is the whole point.
Data only goes down to 2020. I'm assuming events on school long before that. Was there any time when we did that?
I've been in the district for a long time, since 2001. And I have done some version of summer school pretty much every year, so I can speak that it's at least been back since 2001. So, we've had summer school for a long time. I don't know the FTEs or instructional minutes from further back from 2020, but I'm sure it's data that we would have somewhere if there was interest.
It's nice to see the positive every year.
Well, if you remember during COVID, we still hosted a summer school. Unfortunately, it had to be virtual, and it was difficult, and we got creative certainly in how to deliver that. But from a financial perspective, I mean, not only the educational value of getting kids in here and giving them something to do, but those FTEs count toward our revenue limit calculation. So, we're taking credit for those students. So, as those numbers increase, that only helps us in terms of trying to buoy our membership count, because as you know, we have shrunk, just like a lot of schools have shrunk in the state in terms of the FTEs, membership counts and things. So, again, great job getting people in and getting minutes of instruction, because it does help us financially to do that.
I'll have an incoming sixth grader next year, so I'll spread the word.
Any other questions?
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
The next update that I have is for all of you. We have our referendum community information sessions coming up. Adam and I have the first one on Monday, so just under a week. And then, the next three are all in October. We have them on October 9th, 24th, and 31st. We will also be present at the Harvest Day Festival, Harvest the Arts Festival held through the chamber, and that's on October 12. So, much like we did for the summer information session, and they were simply facility sessions leading up to the question that was posed to you in August, we will be seeking at least one of you or one of you to attend each board meeting and to ensure that we don't have a quorum. I would love to know which meetings that each of you will sign up for or be the board representative at. So, if you know that, you can feel free to tell me this evening. Otherwise, you can send me an email. The first one is, like I said, on Monday, so I would prefer to know that one before we leave today. There's, okay, so I'll put this look down for Monday.
I'll take the ninth.
The ninth? They're going fast.
Get it while you can. Yeah, I'll check my phone, so I'll let you know after the meeting.
I'm gonna verify, but I think the third works for me. Alright. And the 31st, we come to get to wear our Halloween costume.
You do. Adam said he would be in costume.
A businessman. Are you passing out candy?
Instead of a director of business.
Better pass out candy. Bring you all my leftovers.
So, please let me know. I will add those to your calendar once you let me know what date you would like to be at. We have been working on our presentation. We have also been working on all of our literature. So, the presentation has some carryover with the one that occurred this summer, just in case we have a new audience. But there's also new information, obviously, since the question was approved by all of you to go to referendum in November. We've made updates to that presentation. Like the other ones, we will make that available online, probably in mid to late October. I would encourage people to come into a face-to-face meeting first, but then we will make those slides available. Mr. Majeris and I have also been working very diligently on getting our back sheet ready. So, that will be sent home as our first of two mailers. And it looks pretty good. We gave them the go-ahead today. So, we've had a lot of proofing help. Ms. Hoffman has helped do that as well. Mr. Carroll has been a good trooper. So, we've had a lot of different eyes on it, just making sure that it goes out and it's perfect. We're working on our postcard next. That will come out in mid-October. And then, we also just received our banners. So, we will have banners for each of the buildings. Those are not by city ordinance. We cannot put those up right away. We have a designated amount of time that they can be up. So, even though we have them, they're in Adam's possession right now. We will not be putting those up until mid-October. And we have all of those dates right away. So, lots of things in action, a lot behind the scenes. And then, things really kick up with some of the information sessions that will be happening. The next thing that I wanted to share with you is the Fall Regional Meeting. Initially, this was going to be a plug for, hey, please let me know if you want to attend. But at this time, I'm telling you, hey, I'm letting you know it is full. You cannot come. I do have two board members that will be there. That is Louise and Don. Both of them are being recognized for their service. And so, in order to avoid a quorum, the rest of you will have to wait for another event somewhere down the road. But that Fall Regional Meeting is coming up. And Louise and I are registered for the pre-convention session, as well as the session itself. And then, Don is coming to the evening session. Wisconsin School Board Week is coming up, and so that is in October. And just to kick things off, each of you will see a lantern in front of you. This year's theme for the school district was that we are, as educators, no matter what role we play in the district or what role we serve, we all of us make a profound difference in the lives of our kids by illuminating the path and igniting the future. And so, we wanted you to be part of that. So, you had to wait a little bit, but hopefully, it is worth your wait. I have mine on in my office right now. And that way, when people drive past our office at night, they can see the lanterns and they're battery-operated, so they're not wasting energy. But yes, so, the lantern is our symbol this year, and we're helping kids find their inner life and shine that. So, I hope that you enjoy those and know that our staff feels that, yes, this is our profession, it's a job, but it's not just a job. It's a calling, and we feel very privileged and honored to be here in the service. The next thing, moving on to district updates. I was going to talk a little bit about cross-country, but you got to hear so much more than I had prepared today. The one thing I will say is that if you are interested in catching a meat, the Slinger Meat is the one that you should go to, because it is local. That is next week, Tuesday, October 1st, which is crazy to me that it's already October. But that will be right off of Highway E, County E, so it's not that far. And the students are doing a phenomenal job. For those of you who don't know a lot about cross-country, yes, it is a sport, and therefore, we think of it as a physical activity. Cross-country is a mental activity, and it's about being mentally tough when you want to give up, not giving up, and setting goals for yourself. And our students have done just a marvelous job so far. I was able to see their first meet and watch their excitement and jitters all at the same time. And they did just a wonderful job, not only in their own competitions, but also cheering each other on and being good sports. And that's part of what we wanted to teach our students, as well as that sportsmanship piece and representing our school well, and they did that. So, very, very proud of them. And Ms. Wilk, you mentioned this earlier, but this is part of our phased plan. And so, we will have track later this spring. And that will be exciting to see, you know, if we jump from the 16 to 20 that they have now to what that number looks like in the spring, because cross-country does come up pretty quickly at the beginning of the school year. So, there is a chance that some people may have missed out, and word will spread. So, that's great. Ms. Morrow isn't here any longer. She left when the cross-country students left. But Red Ribbon Week is coming up, and so I just wanted to remind our board members of that. That's the last week of October through the beginning of November. And last year, there had been, there had been a request that we look for other videos, other heroes for our students to look up to. And so, Ms. Keneely and Ms. Morrow have done that, along with support from administration. So, I think it'll be a really great week for our middle school students. We also had our family nights last week. I will tell you, it was the longest, most exhausting week until we get to parent-teacher conferences or family conferences. However, it's also one of the most rewarding weeks. So, we changed the way we did them this year. We had a Monday night. We had off on Tuesday, and then we had Wednesday and Thursday. People really liked the break, and when I say that, I'm talking about the people who go to all three nights. We enjoyed having one night off in the middle to kind of have a meal at home with our families and such. It was a wonderful turnout. Last year, I was new to the district, and seeing the family nights was just exciting to see the enjoyment from adults and from kids and from staff members and from families that were there. And this year, I can tell you, I don't know how it topped it, but it did. It was just even better. And so, that was the work of our community coordinators. That was the work of the teachers. Very, very nice evening in each of our three buildings. And then, while we had family night, Mr. Majeris and I set up, and we talked about the referendum and provided information to people. We have these beautiful buttons that you may be gifted with the night that you come to our session. So, if you would like one of these, make sure you let me know which night you'd like to be there. But we engaged with about 300 families during those parent nights. That's across all three buildings. I will tell you that Mr. Navarre may have apologized for the location he put us in, because it was a little congested. However, that ended up being our highest-visited night. So, it was a great plan, and you should not have apologized, because it worked out perfectly. But we visited about 150, just under there at Lincoln, and then between the other two buildings, the other 150 were from. So, we were able to talk a lot about family night. I brought in our baskets. This is the basket that we used, and people came up, and they drew a little card. All the cards had questions on them. And then, we were able to stamp their card that they visited our station. So, that made it less intimidating for them to come and talk to us. And it also gave us a specific point of reference to talk to them about the referendum. So, that was another huge part of the community coordinator's helping those three nights be a success. And the last thing that I wanted to share in terms of my report is just, after this board meeting tonight, I am leaving to go to Madison. I have a 7:00 or 7:30 meeting tomorrow morning. I'm hoping it's 7:30, not 7:00. But either way, I'll be in Madison, so it will be okay, and I will be there the rest of the week. So, I have our Wazda Board Meeting tomorrow, our pre-conference sessions tomorrow evening. And then, on Thursday and Friday, we have the Fall Superintendent Conference. So, if you need me, use my cell phone.
Mr. Bradmore has a question.
By what time will that slayer in cross-country return?
Usually, they're at 4:00 PM. I actually have it on my calendar, so if you give me a moment, we'll look it up for you. That one is scheduled for 4:30 PM. And they usually do like a fifth, sixth grade.
Tara? I have a 4 o'clock start at night.
Oh, do you?
I do.
Okay, 4:00 or 4:30, one of those two times. And they usually have about four races, the younger boys, the girls, older boys, older girls. Let's see.
Thank you. Thank you. We're on our discussion portion, and we're gonna start with an administrative report from Food Service. So, Ms. Flitter will provide a brief overview of update. Welcome. Thank you for dinner earlier.
Yes.
Okay. Hi, everyone. So, I guess I will just start from before the school year started. So, we moved from being a food service management company or being with a food service management company to now being self-operated department. So, you wouldn't really notice anything different on the front end. The change is really back of house. So, things that have changed is we file all the contracts now. We bid for our vendors. We've put our own policies and procedures in place. We now have a customized HASSA Plan, our food safety plan, with our customized standard operating procedures. So, what I did before the school year started was really analyze the staffing model that we have, created new recipes, and did some research in testing new menu items. So, those of you that ate dinner tonight, got to taste a few of our new items that we have on the menu. I'm trying something new, usually like once a month. We'll do taste tests with the students coming up, probably starting next month. But the new pizza has been a really big hit, especially at Central. They love that. It's a whole wheat crust, but it tastes very, very good. And then, we do our own little spin on chicken and waffles. So, instead of doing like a sandwich or a Belgian waffle, we use a waffle cone bowl. So, just something fun that the kids can look forward to. See, and then, we also had our tatos tonight, which is a nacho with tater tots. So, we just had that today. I think the kids liked it. It was a little bit mixed reviews. But um, usually it takes a few times for kids to try something before they really know if they like it or not. Um, and then just a bit on how we have things set up at all of our schools, all three schools have salad bars. So um, we get to put out a variety of fresh fruits and vegetables every day, the kids can take a salad every day. Um, we get a variety of produce from the Department of Defense, we allocated um, quite a bit of money there from our commodity dollars. So we get to try lots of different things, things that the kids might not try if they, if it wasn't right in front of them. Like we have turnips going out tomorrow, um, we've had radishes in the past couple of weeks, plums. Um, different varieties of apples, can't remember what else is all out there, but they have quite a few um, different things that for the kids to try. Um, we've had a really great start to our year. We had four open positions when the school year started, or three of them were filled just as the school year started. And the last one was filled just last week and he's doing great. Um, actually a Central graduate, so he's doing well and happy to be back at Central, so that's cool. Um, all of our new people are doing really well, I'm getting lots of positive feedback um, from their performance, so that's great. Um, I've been out at all three of the schools, I try and get there at least once a day to make sure that I know what's going on, if anyone has any issues or if they need anything, I'm always there. Um, and all three kitchens have been running very efficiently this year, so I'm, I'm proud to see that. Um, so far this year in August, or, or five days in August, we served one thousand nine hundred ninety-three lunches and three hundred and eight breakfasts. And so far in September, we've had fourteen days this month and we're up to ten thousand ninety-four lunches and two thousand two hundred and ten breakfasts, so that's really great, we're happy to see that. Um, and then otherwise, uh, we've been doing a few catering things, the tailgate party last Friday went really well. Um, it was two of my staff members and myself getting all the food ready and um, with the rest of the administrators serving, we served about two hundred people. So the event went really well, I'm really ha- proud of how that went and glad that um, we had all the help that we did. So that's all I have.
If I can, before you ask questions, Sarah did not toot her horn enough. Um, it was a huge undertaking, the tailgate last week, so this was not for our district. This was for all of the Hartford area school districts. And the attendance started at a hundred and twenty-five and every couple of days I would say, Sarah, more, more people are S V P. And she had a smile on her face like she does right now and handled everything just very gracefully and um, it was incredibly hot that day, she was out cooking all afternoon. It was Chicky and Carrie that were out with her cooking all day. Doug and team were, were out helping set up. All of our administrators um, took turns helping. Lori was there um, with cleanup, Doug was there, uh, not Doug, I'm looking at Dawn. Dawn and Neil helped with serving and with cleanup. Um, Alex was there with her family, Jordan was there with his family, Adam was there at the beginning before he had to um, go. Uh, Lori helped with serving the food as well, it was a, a huge undertaking for our district. And all of these people were important, so please know that I think that. But if the food had not gone well, it would have been a failure. And so it all came back to your team and you just did a beautiful job and everything was wonderful and had so many people complimenting us on our tailgate party that we did such a nice job hosting and it's because of everyone's joint efforts, but really the food was the star of the show, so.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, Sarah, that's awesome. Do we have any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Our next item in discussion, um, if there is any, we have, I'm gonna read through a few of them because we've got policy technical corrections. There is policy administrative guidelines. Policy first readings, which were twenty-one thirty-one, the educational outcome goals and expectations. Fifty-six, ten point zero-three, alternatives to expulsion and reentry plans, these are new policies review. And then the last one was policy fifty-eight, ten wellness committee and board representatives, so that part I do wanna, we do wanna talk about tonight. Um, this policy eighty-five, ten wellness committee is something that has to be reevaluated every so often. And it's time and it's going to take three to nine months. I'm giving a range.
Yeah.
Do you have a giving a range?
Yes, I do.
I appreciate a quicker timeline, but we're gonna be realistic and say it might go longer than three months. We could have two board members serve on this committee if we would like, which we would like. Um, and then there will be other people on this committee as well. So um, I think a couple of people have shown interest in being on the committee. Right?
Yes, and if I can have Adam share.
Okay.
And if I can have Adam share a little bit about policy because he and Sarah Flitter will be working on this, Neil has also expressed some interest. Um, and then if you wanna have your discussion, sounds great.
Yeah, so um, the purpose of going through this policy and, and having a committee um, as part of operating the food service program, um, as part of providing um, nutrition education for students. There are lots of components in that policy that we have to go over, it's not just the nutritional serving and program, it talks about before and after school, um, food opportunities and what things we're going to follow. It talks about visual, physical education and what things they talk about in terms of um, solid uh, nutritional foundation. Um, this policy and the committee and the assessment of our policy is something that gets reviewed. We're an administrative review uh, by D P I about food service programs. We are having a food service administrative review this year, so while I appreciate your desire to stretch the timeframe out. I will say that we want to have this done relatively quickly because um, without rushing, but getting it done relatively quickly because we will have people here to review that assessment and that policy and uh, the committee work. So we're gonna have to be diligent to set some meetings and get it done so that they can review that information. Um, D P I suggests certain representatives in terms of the committee, they want um, administrative uh, participation, they want participation from teachers, the uh, representatives from the F I A D department, school nurse, food service department, obviously, students, uh, and then parents and um, we'll be including board members as well, even though it's not something that they necessarily um, suggest, but we'll have some board members there to um, help guide us and assess where we're at. Not necessarily a, a big deal when we go through the assessment, whether you score basically certain items on this pre-formed assessment and it's just documenting whether you do one specific thing, whether you do it at all, whether you do it some moderately or very well. Um, again, all you're doing is assessing where you stand now, if the district wants to uh, take that opportunity to put some different things in place, they can. But uh, the most important thing is having um, the committee get together and assess kind of state of affairs at this particular time. So um, good process to go through, we've done it in the past, um, since we haven't had a food service um, administrative review for a while, again, it's time, just like similar to the facility study and those kind of things also.
Any questions or discussion about the wellness committee? Anyone want to speak now and express their interest or being a part of that committee?
I'd like to be a part of the committee.
Since we can only have two, could we settle that right now and Barb and Louise be on the committee? That feel right, this isn't an actually an action item, so this is just discussion, just. Okay. And also then with Louise being a parent, you get a parent perspective as well, which is something you mentioned. But if you feel two to one, okay, great, then unless there's any issues with that, we can discuss that at the meeting anyways, Louise and Barb will be our committee members for that, which is, which is great. Are there any other things from those other items in the discussion section that anyone on the board wanted to discuss?
Well, I had a comment about uh, I'm not sure where, what category it's under here, but policy twenty-two, twenty-one, which is special observance days.
Mm-hmm.
Um, how? And it's, has this list of, I think it's twenty-one days to observe or teach or whatever, and how are those observed? Like, like specifically these names that I don't recognize here or, or the Great Hunger, how specifically are they observed?
So actually, um, this is something that I know the principals have um, in each of their newsletters, you may not call it that, but it's the weekly newsletter. Um, the state indicates what those twenty-one days are that we observe. And then in the newsletters, each of them makes sure that it says, here's the date and here's what the special uh, occurrence is, and then here is why it's significant, so it's read to the students, so that way they know. Um, depending on what it is, something more may be done, but at minimum it needs to be shared with what is that holiday and why is it an observance day?
Okay.
Yeah, cuz there's only a couple that are.
This doesn't get too much longer. Uh, I mean, where does it end for this?
It, it hasn't changed in a while. Um, I will tell you, the, the biggest change that we've seen um, recently or in recent years was um, the Native Americans and Columbus Day, that has been something that D P I has been talking about. Um, but other than that, we have not seen a lot of changes in those days, so. They, they're usually, let's see, pretty consistent.
Will they be adding June nineteenth, do you know?
I have not heard that, um, I know it's not on the list right now.
Right, cuz it's not in during school, so this year.
But even so, like Robert LaFollette, um, day is in June and it's after school is out, so there's a possibility that it could be added. Um, but I have not been, I've not seen anything with June day on it, okay. If there's no other discussion, I'm gonna move on to the action item of the agenda tonight. Our action item number one is parent transportation contracts for the twenty-two, twenty-four, twenty-five school year. By state statute, we are required to provide transportation or issue a transportation contract for private school students that reside within our district. Should they attend a private school within the district boundary of Hartford Union High School. We also consider these contracts when a student lives in an area where the bus route would significantly change with the addition of that area and therefore increase the cost. Since it is more cost effective to have the parent contracts versus bus transportation in these situations, the district will save up to thirty-four thousand dollars for the year. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve the twenty-four, twenty-five parent transportation contract at a cost not to exceed three thousand five hundred fifty-one dollars and forty-five cents.
Second.
Any discussion or questions on that?
My shit. Yep, let's say in August, should.
It's in the high school boundary.
Yeah, so we have to live by the high school boundaries and the organizations or private schools designated inside of it for, so. For decades, we've been having private tra- transportation contracts for St. Augustine students. Um, I'm not really sure about their operations or their attendance or their membership. I can tell you that we transport way fewer um, students or do paracat, uh, transportation contracts for St. Augustine students than we have previously, partly because um, I think some of those families are going and choosing a different um, organization to send their children to, so um, there's one specific set of families um, that are all related that I think they're all attending somewhere different now, so. Yeah, this list was a lot larger going back by eight, ten years.
Any other question, give them a question, Don? Okay. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mm-hmm.
Barb?
Aye.
Ed?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
And I say aye. Motion carries, item number two is the fire and alarm equipment testing and monitoring contracts for twenty-two, twenty-four, twenty-five. The Siemens fire and alarm monitoring contracts are an annual renewal, which services the six buildings in our district. It is a comprehensive plan for testing, inspecting and monitoring fire panels, alarms, ropes and alarm equipment. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the fire and alarm monitoring contracts with Siemens at a cost not to exceed twelve thousand four hundred twenty-seven dollars.
I'll second.
Any questions or discussion?
How often do they monitor them, how often do they come?
So inspections happen at least once a year, um, Mr. Carroll meets with them, we try to do that, inspecting in the summertime because we can, um, it's easier to, to call in, put them in test mode and be able to test the equipment and then pull it out of test mode. So we try to get that stuff done in the summertime. Um, the monitoring is twenty-four hour monitoring, again, unfortunately with the incident that happened in this building. Um, there's communication uh, problems between the equipment, we believe, and the monitoring center, so that's why we didn't get calls that night, some changes made internally and also uh, we have sporadic instances where the, even though the equipment appears to be working, the communication between our location and the monitoring center. I mean, it's never up all the time, just like your charter or your phone system or whatever. So it's hard exactly to pinpoint what happened there, but um, so they're doing monitoring again for all the buildings except for the old Boys and Girls Club behind the A G Bs. Um, that building is set up with a different system and um, we actually monitor using a cellular system, it's just, that's what we do for that building, it's kind of a unusual setup.
That's not through Siemens.
Correct.
That's not on this contract, okay. Any other questions? Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mm-hmm.
Ed?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
Barb?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
And I say aye. Motion carries, item number three is snow removal agreement for the twenty-two, twenty-four, twenty-five school year. The recommendation is to enter a formal agreement with SOX landscaping for snow removal during certain large snowfalls during the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Larger equipment is needed when there are significant storms or when the snow removed creates large piles. This agreement secures the district's place and SOX's customer order, equipment and staff for these instances. Is there a motion or discussion?
I'll have to approve the snow removal agreement. With so excellent landscaping that it costs, we'd see fourteen hundred dollars per.
A second.
I think a roll call.
Special?
We have a special, well, I said, is there a motion or discussion, that one's written weird.
We, we have the uh, criteria set up for when.
Yes, it is in there.
Yep, so um, again, just to provide a little bit of background. Mr. Benke and, and maintenance staff, um, prior to him uh, remove snow, our guys still remove snow. The, the, kind of the situation we deal with is when we have large snowfalls, um, especially fast, large snowfalls, we had an incident last year that um, we received a lot of snow over the course of three days. It puts significant wear and tear on the equipment, it puts significant strain on the staff to keep doing um, snow removal. Um, even for the large operators like SOX or other ones, they'll start in a s- in a snow event and they won't get out of their vehicles for days.
Yeah.
Um, so while any one instance is far underneath our spending authority, we wanted you to have the opportunity to talk and just again, kind of approve this agreement that we have with them. Um, the amount of inches has been designated, the areas uh, in which they're going to do that has been designated. Um, we had um, the representative from SOX here with Mr. Carroll, myself and Scott Mitter, one, one of the maintenance, the department members. Um, and we talked about how the communication will go, um, kind of watching the snowfall before, the day before. Kind of communicating whether we've already called school or not, because that might impact when they come to do removal versus um, again, if we're out of school, that buys everybody a little bit of time perhaps in terms of um, getting things open and getting some first passes done. Um, it's gonna come in to particularly use if we have those large events and we need to push snow back. Um, again, our, our half ton and our full ton trucks with their plows just can't pile snow like their payloaders and their big equipment can, so it would be our intention to use this a couple of times to five times, depending on what the snowfall is, this last year we only used it that once. Um, but it was nice to get things kind of pushed back and, and organized so we could keep the rest of the um, snow season moving appropriately.
The six inches is kind of the, I mean, obviously it depends how quickly it's falling, right, so.
Yeah, so we're targeting four to five inches. Yeah, so we're targeting four to five inches, again, when it gets to be that that much. Um it just becomes very cumbersome to get on it and stay on it, so. Um that's the, that's the guidance that we've given them, but it's gonna come down to, again, our staff communicating with their staff to determine. What the forecasts are, what we've talked about how um kind of our process in terms of sc- calling school if it's an overnight event.
Yeah.
So we'll keep tho- them informed of that situation too. Um again, just trying to avoid. Mister Banky and and Mister Becker back in the day, jumping at trucks at midnight and not stopping until. The next day and going all the way through the day, um we'll do what we have to do, but. Um if we can get a little assistance, again, I think it's gonna be a lot more efficient to do that, so.
Okay.
Thanks for your consideration.
Any questions?
Yes, sir.
Who makes the decision from joint one to call SOX and?
So he'll be communicating, the SOX representative, we communicate with Doug and Scott. Um again, it's just Scott's one-on-one sitting in the plows, um Mr. Carroll. We only have so much equipment, it's part of the problem, um it's not like we have three or four trucks where our. All of our maintenance staff and and some of our custodial staff can jump in. Um it's gonna be Doug's call, but he'll be working with Scott, talking with the SOX representative. Talking to me as I have conversation, Tara, about whether we're canceling or have canceled already. The the afternoon before, we have done that enough times, um knowing that. The the forecast looks bad and we'd rather call it sooner rather than later. Just to remind you again, that's a countywide kind of decision that's made with superintendents, they meet with sheriff's department, they get the. Um weather reports from National Weather Service, and we talk to the bus company when we make those decisions.
Is there any concern about SOX customers other than us?
No, so again, when we needed help last year, they were able to allocate that. We think that by formalizing this um agreement, they're willing to potentially. Purchase and have other equipment on hand, it doesn't help just us. But if they know that they're also helping us, then they know they have some business to repay. You know, fifty, seventy, hundred thousand dollar orders and operators and things like that, so I think it's proven that we do. Come up with some formalized agreement, so we know we have a spot.
Where are they located?
Um in between Hartford and Slade.
They do a lot of work in Hartford, I think, for other businesses, yeah. And I would like a roll call vote, please.
Sure.
Don?
Aye.
Ed?
Aye.
Barb?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
And I say aye.
Motion carries, item number four is the occupational health services agreement for twenty-four, twenty, twenty-four, twenty-five school year. In accordance with policy eighty-four fifty-three point zero one, we contract with Freiter Medical College to offer the hepatitis B vaccine. The vaccine is offered to all employees as they could potentially be exposed to blood or other bodily fluids containing blood during reports of their work. The vaccine costs seventy-five dollars per dose and requires three doses within six months to be considered complete. Employees may also decline the immunization. The district will keep record of any declines, this is an updated agreement and it is a rolling agreement unless either party terminates. Is there a motion or discussion?
I'll make a motion to approve the occupational health service agreement with Freiter Medical College of Wisconsin. To provide hepatitis B vaccinations to district employees at a cost not to exceed seventy-five dollars per injection.
Second.
Any other discussion or questions? Can I have a roll call, please?
Barb?
Aye.
Ed?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
And I say aye.
Motion carries, item number five. Is policy revisions, the long list of policies. Zero-one sixty-four meetings, zero-one seventy-four point one, the annual report, twenty-three forty, district sponsored trips. Thirty-one twenty, employment of professional staff, thirty-one twenty point zero four, employment of substitutes. Thirty-one twenty point zero eight, employment of personnel for co-curricular and extracurricular activities, thirty-four thirty-one employee leaves. Forty-one twenty point zero four, employment of substitutes, forty-four thirty-one employee leaves, fifty-two hundred attendance. Fifty-three thirty, administration of medication and emergency care, fifty-five zero five academic honesty. Fifty-six ten, suspension and expulsion, fifty-seven seventy-one, search and seizure. Seventy-five forty point zero five, assistive technology and services, seventy-five forty-four, use of social media. Eighty-three ninety-five, student mental health services, eighty-five hundred food services, eighty-five thirty-one, free and reduced price meals. Eighty-five fifty, competitive food sales, eighty-six hundred, transportation, eighty-six forty, transportation for field and other district sponsored trips. Eighty-six sixty, transportation by private vehicle for district sponsored activities or trips. And eighty-six eighty, transportation service contracts. This list includes current policies which must be updated per Neola's semi-annual release. Is there a motion or discussion?
Yeah, I have a um comment here. Um that I'm objecting to the forty-four thirty-one and thirty-four thirty-one. Which Dr. Vialopos told me are actually the same, but for a different person. Um for the leave for voting. Um I don't understand why people cannot get voting in on voting day. If the polls are open from seven AM to eight PM. And then there's mail-in voting and uh absentee voting.
So that we are required to give up to three successive hours to vote in each election day, no matter what type of business we are. People can't just leave and notify us.
Yeah, I I saw that, yeah, I saw that.
Any other questions or comments about things, policy revisions? If not, is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the listed policies, as long as I don't have to read them again.
I was gonna say, unfair, uh thank you for the motion, do we have a second?
A second.
Uh all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Name.
Any opposed?
Day.
Okay, the motion carries. Our next item is number six, the consent agenda. The consent agenda includes approval of minutes, bills, treasures, report and personnel recommendations. We don't discuss anything specific within this uh consent agenda, is there a request to pull an item from the consent agenda as it is listed? And if there is not, is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Barb?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
Ed?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
And I say aye.
Motion carries, item number nine is the board meeting reflection and feedback. So feedback from the last meeting was included in your board packet, um we all fill out the PUSL, don't forget to fill yours out tonight before you leave, which could be right in front of you. It's very warm in this room, it's not very warm, I shouldn't say that, it's very pleasant in this room tonight, that's sometimes a delta of mine. Um and with that, red item number ten, could I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, coming as adjourns, thank you.